So I'll go ahead and call for this public meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, Wednesday, December 16th, at 1:30 in the afternoon. It will be on today with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, being visible with liberty and justice for all.
For a public announcement, we have a proclamation for the 2015 Parks and Trails Stewart Award, read by Commissioner Currie, I said.
I've been called that before.
Whereas individual citizens play a vital role in caring for Missoula County recreational facilities, and whereas there are exemplary stewards throughout county engaging in voluntary projects and practices that maintain and enhance our recreational opportunities, and whereas Missoula County through the Parks and Trails Stewart Award wishes to recognize and thank these stewards, as well as promote their stewardship success stories so that others may learn from them, and whereas the Missoula County Parks and Trails Advisory Board reviewed the 2015 nominations and made a unanimous recommendation for the 2015 Parks and Trails Stewart Award winner, now therefore we, the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Roger DeBrito as the recipient of the 2015 Missoula Parks and Trails Stewart Award. We honor Roger's outstanding contributions in advocating for active transportation infrastructure and education in Lolo and the surrounding areas. This, along with his other work towards improving playing fields and parks in Lolo, provides an opportunity for all to learn from his success. And it was dated the 30th of November.
Are there any other public announcements? Is there any public comment on items that are not on today's agenda? Public comments? All right, moving on, our current claims list, there's no dates associated this time, but it's $4,870,759.67. With that, I will begin the hearings for the certificates of survey, starting with opening the hearing on the Trinari family transfer with a staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Christine Nocenzo, a planner with Community and Planning Services. And this is a consideration of a family transfer exemption affidavit submitted by Guy and Teresa Trinari. They own 3.6 acres in Clinton. The proposal is to use the family transfer exemption to create and transfer two parcels to their adult children. Both would be 1.2 acres. One would be transferred to Aaron Trinari and the other to Andrea Proff, their children, and used for residential purposes. The remainder tract would also be 1.2 acres. The request is zoning compliant because the property is unzoned. It does have a land use recommendation of two dwellings per acre in the 1998 Urban Comprehensive Plan. The parcel was created in 1981 when the Teagues used the agricultural exemption, restricting the parcel to agricultural use. That restriction was lifted in 1988 by Commissioner Resolution. Now on to access structures and floodplain. If approved, the new lots would be accessed via private access easement off Highway 10, which you can see in yellow on that slide. There is potential for the easement to become overburdened with the additional lots and may require naming at time of filing or permitting. There is one dwelling and one outbuilding on the property, which were built in 1989, and it is located out of the floodplain. Those dwellings, those buildings don't exist on the proposed structures, transferred structures, they exist in the remainder. The request was reviewed for the evasion criteria listed in the subdivision regulations and triggered two. The first, to divide a tract that was created through use of an exemption and that those, or that agricultural exemption from 1981 created the parcel and was lifted in 1988. And to divide a tract that will become one of three or more parcels that will have been divided from the original tract through use of exemptions. And this proposal would create a total of six lots from that original tract through use of exemptions. But given that information, the staff recommendation is for approval. At this time, I would ask that Guy approach the podium, and we'll ask the standard family transfer questions. Thank you for attending. And could you state your name for the record?
My name is Guy Trinari.
Thank you. And are you using the subdivision exemption process in an attempt to evade subdivision review?
No.
How long have you owned the property?
Eight years.
And did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
And are you in the business of building or developing property?
No.
And do you understand that this exemption is not being reviewed for adequate physical and legal access by all vehicles in all weather?
Yes.
And do you understand that approval of this exemption does not mean the property is approved for zoning compliance, building permit, floodplain, or septic permits, or any other permit?
Yes.
And with the recipients in mind, will the transferred properties be developed? Do the recipients plan to develop?
To build, yes.
And will the recipient of the, will the recipients of the property be residing on that property?
Yes.
And where do they live now?
My son, Aaron, lives in Missoula, and my daughter lives in Kennesaw, Connecticut.
Okay. That is all of my questions. The Commissioners may have more.
I will. Just to be clear, so that you understand what we meant by the fact that that easement could be overburdened, in other words, sometimes easements are real clear what their use is and may limit the future use, so that's something that you'll have to figure out with your
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure you understood that part. More questions?
Questions, Karen?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Is there any public comment on the Trinari family transfer? Seeing none, I will close the hearing.
I would move that the Commissioners approve the request by the Trinari's to create and transfer two parcels by use of the family transfer exemption, based on the fact that there does not appear to be an attempt to evade subdivision review.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. You get a letter from our office pretty soon, but you can let John start doing the work.
And next we'll open the Butler, the hearing for the Butler family transfer with a staff report.
Okay, and again, for the record, my name is Christine Nocenzo with Community and Planning Services. This is a consideration of a family transfer exemption affidavit submitted by Patricia Butler. She owns 40 acres off Mill Creek Road, just south of the county line, in the sort of northern Frenchtown area. The proposal is to use the family transfer exemption to transfer the southern 20 acres of the lot to her husband, Stephen Butler. This would give them the opportunity to downsize from the existing large home on the site and build a smaller home to that proposed acreage. The remainder parcel would be 20 acres and be maintained as an existing family cemetery, which is indicated on an upcoming slide. The proposal is compliant with zoning, as the property is unzoned. The land use recommendation is one dwelling per 40 acres in the open and resource land use designation from the 2002 Regional Land Use Guide. If approved, the transferred parcel would be accessed from Mountain Top Road, which you can see sort of goes through it, and is a private road off Mill Creek Road. There are no dwellings or outbuildings on the property, although, as mentioned earlier, there is a family transfer on proposed tract one.
Family cemetery, you mean?
Yes, family cemetery. The parcel is located in Zone D with undetermined floodplain, and staff recommends noting this on the decision letter, that the parcels are identified as undetermined flood risk. So that's sort of the proposal, and now I'll talk a bit about the history and the family transfer history of the claimant and recipient, which involves the lot to the north. So parcel history, in April of 1998, this parcel, parcel two, was, and parcel one to the north, were deeded from James Davis to Stephen and Patricia Butler. Then in 2010, parcel two, the parcel in this request, was transferred via quitclaim from Stephen and Patricia to Patricia. In February of 2015, Patricia transferred ownership via quitclaim to Breka Properties, their land holding company. And then two months later, in April of 2015, Breka Properties transferred, quitclaimed the property back to Patricia. And now they're requesting to transfer half the parcel to her husband, Stephen. So that's the history of this parcel in question, and then we'll talk a bit about the parcel to the north, because they are both partying to a family transfer that occurred there. So parcel one is the other parcel that they acquired in 1998 from James Davis. Then in 2010, it was transferred via quitclaim from Patricia and Stephen to solely Stephen's ownership. And in 2011, Stephen used the family transfer exemption to transfer three 20-acre parcels to Patricia and their two children. The forthcoming slides will look at each of those family transferred tracts, starting with tract one. And this parcel in red on the slide was created, created and transferred from Stephen to their son, Nick, through the 2011 family transfer. And in 2014, Nick transferred the tract via quitclaim back to Stephen and Patricia, and that was followed by a 2015 quitclaim transferring the parcel from the Butlers to Breka Properties. And then in tract two, this was created and transferred via that same family transfer to Karina. And then in 2014, Karina transferred the tract via quitclaim to Stephen and Patricia, and that was followed by a 2015 quitclaim from the Butlers to Breka Properties. And then tract three was created and transferred through that same family transfer in 2011 to Patricia Butler from Stephen. And in 2015, Patricia Butler transferred the tract via quitclaim to Breka Properties. So all three transferred properties are now owned by Breka Properties. And this is sort of a timeline of all of that information, just if that's maybe redundant, but maybe redundantly helpful, to see it sort of as a historic breakdown of all the parcels. So this request was reviewed for the subdivision evasion criteria in the subdivision regulations and triggered four. The first, to divide tracts that were created as part of an overall development plan with characteristics such as common roads utilities, covenants, open space, et cetera. This proposal would, the parcels would be accessed via common roads connecting the family transferred parcels to the previous family transfer and that the claimant and recipient were party to in 2011. The next criteria triggered is to divide tracts that fit a previously established pattern of land division and land transfers, which is applicable. This transfer extends the pattern of land divisions and transferred parcels to the north that are now owned by Breka Properties, and the preceding pattern of quitclaim transfers also fits the pattern that occurred to the north. Number seven was also triggered to divide tracts that were recently transferred to the applicant. This parcel was transferred via quitclaim from Breka Properties in April of this year. And it also triggered number 10 to divide land or transfer to a spouse, which is the case in this request. So the staff recommendation is for denial, but before we get to the motion, I will have Patricia approach the podium, and we'll go through the standard family transfer questions. Thanks for attending today. And if you can state your name for the record.
Patricia Butler.
Thank you. And are you using the subdivision exemption process in an attempt to evade subdivision review? And how long have you owned the property?
Since 1998, that's 17 years.
And did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
And do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review? And are you in the business of building or developing property? Would you mind expanding a bit on what Breka Properties is?
Because I'm sorry, confusing. Breka Properties is an LLC that was created because our attorney said that since we own rental properties, that we should get everything that we own out of our name, including our cars and so on and so forth, because of the possibility of lawsuits. So that was the purpose of creating that LLC, just to hold the property in a safe place apart from our personal.
Thank you. And do you understand that this exemption is not being reviewed for adequate physical and legal access by all vehicles in all weather?
Yes.
And do you understand that approval of this exemption does not mean the property is approved for zoning compliance, building permits, floodplain, or septic systems, or any other permit?
Yes.
And with the recipient in mind, will the property that's being transferred to Stephen be developed?
Can I give a little background? Because it's all a little kind of confusing, looking at that.
Sure.
The original purpose for the division of the property was because my husband and I are trying to get ready for retirement, and we have a blended family and four kids. So we wanted to have four 20-acre lots, so there would be no conflict between kids. And at the time, Eli and associates recommended that we split the process for financial reasons. We couldn't cover everything. So we did the 80 acres first. And my daughters live in the Bahamas. So that's why we transferred the property to me on that third lot, instead of one of my daughters. And then the other 40 was transferred to me so that we could do this subdivision later. And as I mentioned, if I had known there was going to be a problem, because we're trying to create the property for our kids, I probably would have found a way to finance it all at one time. That's how it ended up the way it is. And then the Breka Properties is because we recently became owners of rental properties in another state, and we were told we need to get everything out of our name for our own protection. So that's why it's so complicated.
Okay. And I just have three more questions. Will the, so, will the transferred property be developed?
With the state of the economy, I don't know as my husband and I will be able to retire and still pay a mortgage on the property that we have, which is very big. So we looked at it as an option. If we needed to sell, rather than do a reverse mortgage, we'd rather sell it and then put something small on the other, the other lot, the southern lot, the 40.
The southern lot?
Yes.
So you may sell the northern portion?
Lot one, no, lot four has our home, which is 3,700 square feet. It's a huge home for two old folks.
Oh, so the remainder that, from the previous family transfer?
Right. We still own, owe a couple hundred thousand on that, so there won't be any paying off our property. We were married late. And I just told my husband it might be a matter of expediency for us to have an option, because we don't want to leave our home. We don't want to leave the mountain, for sure. But if we had to, we could move on to one of the lots and then sell the house.
So there's the possibility of developing?
Possibility, and I'm praying that it doesn't happen.
Will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Possibility.
And where does the recipient live now?
It lives on lot four.
Okay. So those are all of my questions. The Commissioners may have more.
Just a couple. This is interesting, you could write a movie or something on this. So, so the two lots that were transferred to the children and then transferred back, so this is Snoopy, probably none of my business, and you don't have to answer, but are the children listed? Is the LLC, is it like a family LLC then?
Yeah, it's all, well, they're not listed as yet, but this is all going into the estate for them.
Okay. And then it was mentioned that you were interested in creating the one lot would be a cemetery lot, and you know there's a whole nother process to do that, because it doesn't sound like you have enough people to bury on 20 acres, so.
Right. We have, we have two buried there now. My mother and Steve's grandfather are there. And we just want to preserve that so that it never can be sold, even by our children. I'm going to be there, and I don't want to be dug up, so that's the purpose of that.
So the four lots, previous lots, well, one of them has your home on it, but other than that, you already have five lots total currently that you, so there could be one for each child right now, except one is encumbered by a cemetery.
That, and the fact that it's 40 acres, I don't want the cemetery sold, and that gives one child 40, and I'm in the midst of my father's failure to make a couple right moves, and I've been in probate with one brother for three years. And we're really trying with a blended family to avoid any conflict where you end up not, I mean, we're alienated. I haven't talked to him in three years, and sad.
I guess in light of the information, Christine, are our staff still recommending denial of the parcel?
I don't think it changes any of the history that got us to where we are. Yeah, so I'm not sure.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah. I think I would keep my recommendation, just based on the history. Yeah. Sorry.
Is there any public comment on the Butler family transfer?
And if you or your husband have more information you'd like to add, you're welcome to do that, too.
I know, just trying to be fair with our kids and not have a war.
I think some.
All right. Thank you.
So if there are no further questions, and so how many parcels are there currently? Total five? And if this one makes six?
This one makes six.
There are four children? Four children?
Four children, yeah.
Okay.
The, the big house, if we can maintain it until we die, will be sold and divided four ways evenly. I'm not going to give anybody a chance to argue over it. The 20 acres, which is the fifth parcel, is the cemetery, which I do not want anyone to sell. I don't want to destroy that house.
Great. See no further comment, I will close the hearing.
I'll make a comment.
Okay, sure.
Stephen, Abbot, and the D-line associates. And one of the criteria that Christine came up with was, I think this was a planned development through the access. That wasn't the case. I think that that, the road was a logging road, and when we divided the 80 acres, or 160, whatever it was, to the north, you know, you always have to provide some access. So we did it that way, but it wasn't a pre-planned development. And then also, you're, you know, one of the criteria is a spouse, and that's your guys' rule, but it's in state. Family transfer, immediate family, a spouse is in the immediate family. So I'm not, still not sure how you guys keep track of this, how many criteria it is. But on this one, if you take those into consideration, I should drop you down to two. And on the one that was just approved, you know, there was six parcels derived out of one original parcel with agricultural exemption. If I was, well, if, actually, I'm a betting man, and if somebody would have, if we would have, could have bet, I'd have bet that you'd recommend a denial on that one, so I was surprised that you recommended approval.
And I think the difference between the two is that no one from the application was involved in those previous exemptions?
Uh huh.
And that's not the case here.
And the point about the number of evasion criteria that are met is a point that's been brought up before, and it's not like three and you're out, or anything like that. It's just a very, a list of possibilities that kind of make us think a little bit more deeply about things. So it's not a certain number that you hit, it's kind of a preponderance of evidence. And you could have one, only, only mean one criteria for evasion, but it could be substantial enough that that would make us believe that you were trying to evade subdivision. So it's not a numbers thing, but it is a, to me, it's the pattern of development, and it appears potentially that, that this is an attempt to subdivide the land without going through subdivision, based on the pattern of development and the parcel history through this same family.
I think probably just complicated through all the deed transfers, the listening to an attorney or an accountant who made this more confusing.
Is there any other public comment on the Butler family transfer? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
So I appreciate all the time that staff puts into this, because this one is complicated, so I appreciate all the timeline that was laid out, and, and also Ms. Butler's explanation of what they're trying to do. So in this particular case, I actually, you know, I think that exempt, the exemptions in law should be exemption, not rule. It shouldn't be something that somebody does take advantage of. We don't deny very many, we've denied a few. This one, I, in hearing what Breka is formed for, and that you've got four kids, and they're all, you know, you're just trying to figure out how to keep yourself out of probate, I actually will move that we approve the request to transfer the one parcel, as it does not appear to be an attempt to evade subdivision.
I would second the motion, and I think I would concur that the history of quitclaim deeds transferring properties back and forth is worrisome, and that had me very concerned. But after listening to the explanation regarding the advice from attorneys and accountants, I can sympathize, I guess, with that sort of advice, when in hindsight, you would have done it one way, and you were told by professionals to do it another, and led you down a road where some years later, maybe that wasn't the best thing to do. So I guess I still have some concerns. I'm not without concerns that the history of quitclaim deeds and transferring a property is, gives me pause for concern, but I guess I would err on the benefit of the testimony by the Butlers.
And I sympathize as well, but there are, there are adequate parcels for each child to have a parcel at this time, and there's, have been numerous subdivisions, quitclaim deeds, complicated history, so. So I do see this as an attempt to evade subdivision. But, so the motion is to approve the transfer and it is seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Me.
I oppose.
Same sign.
Same sign.
All right, moving on to the, I will open the hearing for the Mo family transfer.
Yes.
What does that mean? Does it have to be unanimous?
It's approved. No, it does not have to be unanimous, so it was approved.
Thank you very much.
I wish you consideration. And opening the Mo family transfer was staff report?
Yeah. Can I just verify, is Ray here? Okay, I think you came a little late, is that right?
What's that?
You came a little late. I didn't get a chance to introduce myself, so no apologies. I'll do a little report and then call you up.
Okay.
Okay, so we, for the record, my name is Christine De Senzo with Community of Planning Services. This is a consideration of a family transfer exemption affidavit submitted by Raymond Mo. He owns 5.39 acres in Missoula, near the Y. And the proposal is to use the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one more or less two acre parcel to his adult child, Jordan Mo, for residential purposes. The remainder tract would be four acres. And it is zoning compliant because the property is unzoned. There's a land use recommendation of open and resource with one dwelling per 40 acres on the western portion and residential with one dwelling per five acres on the eastern portion. The parcel is split by the 1998 Urban Comprehensive Plan to the west and the 1979 Y O'Keefe Creek Plan to the east, as you can see here. The tract 60 was created by Geneva Cates in 1979 and is one of many parcels that were created through a large lot exemption at that time. The current lot configuration is the result of a 2002 family transfer by the BICs creating these four lots from tract 60 shown in the COS 5400. The access is off Fire Bucket Loop, and there's one structure built in 2004, and the proposed lot is vacant. It's out of the flood plain. This family transfer triggered two evasion criteria. The first to divide a tract that was created through use of an exemption and, as discussed, the 1979 Kate's Large Lot Exemption and the 2002 BIC Family Transfer. And also to divide a tract which will become one of three or more parcels that will have been divided from the original tract through use of exemptions. And this will become the fourth lot created from that original tract, or 60. So staff is recommending approval. And at this time, I would ask Ray to approach the podium and we'll ask for questions. Thanks for attending, and if you could state your name for the record?
Ray Mo.
Thank you. And are you using the subdivision exemption process in an attempt to evade the subdivision review process?
No.
Thank you. How long have you owned the property?
Since 2006.
And did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Do you or your transparees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
And have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
Are you in the business of building or developing property?
No.
And do you understand that this exemption is not being reviewed for adequate physical and legal access by all vehicles in all weather?
Yes.
And do you understand that approval of this exemption does not mean that the property is approved for zoning compliance, building permit, flood plain, or septic systems, or any other permit?
Yes.
And is the recipient in attendance as well?
Yep.
If you could approach the bench, we'll ask these questions of you. If you could state your name?
Jordan Mo.
Thank you. And are you planning to develop the property?
As of right now, no.
And will the recipient of the, will you be residing on the property?
Possibly, for sure.
And where does, where do you live now?
At the property, Fisher property.
All right, so that is it for my questions. Thank you both for being here. The commissioners may have more for you.
I have a question for Ray. So I'm just curious, because I was one of the commissioners that was here when we let the BIC family do a transfer. So did you buy it from a BIC family member?
No, I ended up buying it from Mike McVicker. He built it. And then we ended up buying it a couple of years after that.
Okay, I was just curious. I always wonder whether people really give it to their kids, whether they really build on, and it doesn't sound like they do.
Yeah, the BICs are still there.
They're still there.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I would move that, oh, sorry.
Is there any public comment on the Mo family transfer? All right, seeing none, I'll close the hearing.
I would move that the commissioners approve the request by Raymond Mo to create and transfer one parcel by use of the family transfer exemption, based on the fact that there does not appear to be an attempt to evade subdivision review.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that completes the certificates of survey. Moving on to our other hearings, I will open the Iverson Union Creek Open Space Bond Project with staff report.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Kaylee Becker from Missoula County Parks, Trails, and Open Lands. Today's hearing is regarding a request for open space bond funding from Five Valleys Land Trust for the Iverson Union Creek Project. Five Valleys has prepared a presentation, so I'll hand it over to Vicki to do that, and then I'll follow it with the staff report. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Kaylee, and thank you commissioners for the opportunity to present this project to you all. For the record, my name is Vicki Edwards. I am a conservation project manager with Five Valleys Land Trust. The Union Creek Potomac Proposal is a project that we've been working on with Denny and Charlotte Iverson to place a purchase conservation easement on approximately 164 acres in the Potomac Valley. We are asking Missoula County for $140,000 of open space bond funds to go towards the acquisition of that conservation easement. Those funds would be matched by contributions from Five Valleys Audubon Society, Five Valleys Land Trust, and the landowners as well. The proposed Union Creek Potomac Conservation Easement is located in the heart of the Potomac Valley, just south of Highway 200. It's on this map, it is in the orange polygon. Other land ownership within the valley includes private land that's in white, state lands that are in light blue, there's BLN lands that are yellow, at least on my screen, Forest Service lands are light green, and then we also have nature conservancy lands on the western portion of the map with that olive green and brown. Conservation easements are depicted on this map with the horizontal lines in blue and gray, and Five Valleys Land Trust holds those conservation easements in blue. And adjacent easements to this property or nearby easements include the Harrison Conservation Easement, Hayes, Hall. And then also, we ended up purchasing a conservation easement from the Iverson family in 2007 to protect approximately 258 acres in the Potomac Valley. And that's the property that's located just to the southeast of the word Potomac on the screen there. And this project has actually been a long time in the making. We started talking with Denny and Charlotte Iverson back in 2008. They approached us and were interested in exploring opportunities to piece together subdivided parcels within the Potomac Valley to conserve the open space values for agricultural production, also the scenic views, the important agricultural soils, and the important wildlife habitat within the, within the valley. And it's, it's taken quite a few years to get to the point where we're at right now. And fortunately, within the last year, an opportunity presented itself to, that met all of those goals. And so the result is this Union Creek Potomac Conservation Easement. This project is a two-phase project, and the proposal that you have in front of you now is, hello, come on in.
Yeah, you know how to respond.
And so this project is a two-phase project. The proposal that you have in front of you is phase two of the project. Phase one has already been completed. But I think it's important, although it's not, you know, a part of this proposal, to be able to provide you information on the phase one portion of the project, to give you a bit of background information and context to the overall project. And so looking at this map, this is all of the 164 acres that we are working on placing a conservation easement on with, with the Iversons. Approximately a year ago, private land that's now identified on this map is Five Valleys Land Trust. There was a different private landowner that owned that. About a year ago, they placed that on the market and wanted to sell it. And Denny and Charlotte were interested in acquiring that parcel. We worked with them on this and evaluating the conservation values and meeting our goals at Five Valleys Land Trust and our mission in protecting the conservation values of the Potomac Valley. And this property has a lot of those conservation values. And then working with Denny and Charlotte and, and something that they wanted to do also is expand their agricultural production area for their ranch. And one of the things about this is that with two owners, you can see the boundary line there, it's actually in pink, and that boundary line makes it really challenging when you have two different landowners and managing a property for agricultural, to maximize agricultural production, but also from a conservation standpoint and being able to do conservation work along Union Creek. And so this project met all of our goals and criteria to protect those values. And because of the timeline and the fact that this property was on the market, and the, the fact that it does take a bit of time, of course, to go through different processes to, to obtain funds for a purchase conservation easement, Five Valleys Land Trust stepped in and acquired that 40 acres from the private landowner to ensure the conservation of the parcel. Now, for Denny and Charlotte to acquire that property, they need to place a purchase conservation easement on their 124 acres and then purchase the 40 acres at an encumbered value. And so that's the phase one of the project. It's already complete. Five Valleys Land Trust acquired the 40 acres in September from a private landowner, and now we're moving on to phase two of the project. And phase two, the final product of this, would be one conservation easement over all three of these parcels that's granted by Denny and Charlotte Iverson to Five Valleys Land Trust. And Denny and Charlotte, at the, at the end of this, will own all 164 acres. So let's talk about the conservation values of the, the property. It provides open space for agricultural production. It provides fish and wildlife habitat and connectivity, not only at local ice scale, but at a broad landscape level. It has important agricultural soils, and it really has some pretty amazing scenic views from Highway 200. The conservation values for open space for agricultural production, all 164 acres historically has been managed for agricultural production. There are no residential dwellings on this property. And to protect that open space, Denny and Charlotte would not, the conservation easement would not allow for any subdivision. It would not allow for any residential dwellings on the property, and it localizes any permanent agricultural structures to a one acre agricultural building zone just off of Shaw Lane. Now primarily, the property is managed for agricultural production, but there are secondary benefits, of course, to managing it for agricultural production, and that's fish and wildlife habitat and connectivity. The property includes 1.6 miles of meandering Union Creek. Union Creek is a West Slope Cutthroat Trout Stream. West Slope Cutthroat Trout are a species of concern in the state of Montana, and a species in greatest need of conservation is identified by Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks Statewide Wildlife Action Plan, and that plan was just released in 2015. Also, this, this property contains approximately 23 acres of mapped wetland and riparian habitat and 20 acres of Montane grasslands. And those are habitat types of greatest conservation need in the state of Montana, as identified by that, that plan, as I mentioned earlier. Five Valleys Audubon Society went out on the property earlier this year, late spring, and conducted a bird survey. They observed 31 different species of birds. And what was really exciting is that they found a really strong population of bobolink. Bobolink are a species of concern within the state, and they're very unusual in the western portion of the state as well. Yet there's a really strong population here, and that really speaks to the management of the wetlands and the grasslands on the property as well. Other species, a significant number, savannah sparrows, black bear, elk, and unfortunately elk that end up eating the Iversons' crops, but elk like use the property as well. White-tailed deer and others utilize this habitat in the property. So other conservation values, 100% of this property includes locally important agricultural soils. And as you all know, locally important soils make up less than 5% of all soils within Missoula County, and this conservation easement would protect 164 acres within the Potomac Valley. Other values, those scenic views. Whenever, you know, I think about the Potomac Valley, this is an image that I think about driving out along Highway 200, and it's, you know, working landscapes, Union Creek, meandering through the valley. And this, this project would conserve those scenic views by limiting development. And as mentioned, the limitations on that development include no residential development, no subdivision, one acre, a one acre agricultural building zone, and that's in the crosshatch there, right off of Shaw Lane and outside of the riparian wetland area. And then we would want to maintain existing agricultural use on the property as well. So looking at the budget, overall total estimated project costs are $184,300. The estimated value of the purchase conservation easement is $164,000. Estimated transaction costs are $20,300, and that does not include Five Valleys Land Trust staff time or legal fees, but it does include that stewardship contribution that goes towards our annual stewardship monitoring and our legal fund. We are requesting $140,000 from the Missoula County Open Space Bond Program. Other contributors, as I mentioned earlier, include the landowner with an in-kind donation and a cash donation, Five Valleys Land Trust, and Five Valleys Audubon Society. And Five Valleys Audubon Society usually doesn't, you know, they, they don't have a very big budget, and they usually like to focus their efforts on the important bird area within the Missoula Valley. But seeing the pretty amazing population of bobolink and savannah sparrow on this property and other species, they really wanted to contribute a little something to it. So that's why you see a contribution from them. Total project price per acre is $1,124, and the county total project price per acre is And so with that, again, I thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal to you and for your consideration of the project, and we really hope that you'll join us in protecting this special place. Thank you.
Kaylee, has the staff report?
Yes. Thank you. So this project proposes to use up to $140,000 of open space bond funding towards the purchase of a conservation easement on 164 acres in Potomac, Montana. Five Valleys Land Trust would hold the conservation easement on this property. On November 19th, 2015, the Board of County Commissioners determined that this is a qualified open space bond project through adopting reimbursement resolution 2015-119, which qualifies the project for funding. On November 19th, 2015, as well, the Missoula County Open Lands Citizen Advisory Committee voted to recommend this project for approval, which they ranked highest in terms of working landscapes, scenic historic values, and water quality. The 2007 inner local agreement related to the open space bond established the general purposes of the bond, and this project meets four of those purposes. Protecting the water quality of rivers, streams, and, or rivers and streams. Protecting the water quality of rivers, streams, and, or rivers and streams, conserving a working ranch and farm, providing open space and scenic landscapes, and managing for growth. As Vicki mentioned, this property is undeveloped agricultural land, which is currently being used by the Iverson family, and the conservation easement would allow these uses to continue. The conservation easement would not allow any residential development, just the agricultural buildings and the building zone. And Union Creek runs through the property and supports freshwater emergent wetlands. And these are important for water quality as well as bird habitat. The total project cost is $184,300, or $184,000, 164,000 of this is the estimated conservation easement value, and then $20,300 for the transaction costs. So the bond funding would be applied towards the purchase of the conservation easement. Five Valleys Land Trust is requesting 76% of the total project cost, and this works out to a cost per acre of $854. Staff recommends approval of this project. There are no special conditions, and the approval resolution is in your packet, is attachment C. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a member of the Open Lands Committee here to present the recommendation.
That's Laniya?
Actually, it's Aleisha.
Never mind, it's Aleisha.
I'm from Reno, and she's from Tolu.
Oh. Hello, for the record, my name is Aleisha Vanderheiden. I am a voting member of the Open Lands Committee, and I am here to share our unanimous support for this project. As mentioned, this voluntary conservation easement will protect 164 acres in the Potomac Valley. The Iverson family has shown commitment to and stewardship of the working landscape in the lower Blackfoot Valley for generations. This is the second project that they've brought before the Open Lands Committee. And with your approval, these 164 acres will be protected from subdivision. They'll be available for continued agricultural production. And I think everybody who's traveled Highway 200 has appreciated this landscape and the beauty of it, and we'd be happy to keep that there. And it's not just those of us a stone's throw away in Potomac, Reno, and all the other members of the Open Lands Committee. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any public comment on the Iverson-Union Creek open space bond project?
Hi, for the record, I'm Dennis Iverson. My wife and I have been kind of looking at this property for a long time. When we put the easement on the original home ranch, the intent was to use those dollars to eventually buy some more farmland. That opportunity came about in, I don't know, two or three years ago. And then our intent was to hold that and, you know, eventually put a conservation easement on those lands, the original 124 acres, to potentially buy some more farmland. This ranch was, these acres are part of a larger ranch that used to be part of the Will's Ranch that I worked on, and it was my first job in 1975, '76. And at that time, shortly after, I worked there a couple of years, went off to college, and then the family started to split up the ranch. And so this is a continuing process for us to try and put some of that ranch back together. And it'll probably put most of the good irrigated land back together. We leased the rest of the irrigated farmland that was part of that ranch. But I think we've come to the end of our borrowing days, and maybe that will be left up to our kids down the road to try and put some more of it back together. But when the 40 acres came up for sale, it precipitated our desire to hurry up and get a conservation easement on the land that we had to be able to purchase the 40 acres, because we're still heavily in debt on the first 124 acres that we bought. So for us to purchase that 40 acres outright just wasn't in the picture. So that's the main reason we went this route and worked with Five Valleys. And I've got to say, they've kind of stuck their neck out buying the 40 acres with the hope that we could get this done. If we don't get this done, then we'll go to some other plan that we haven't developed yet. But in the meantime, and the owner of the 40 acres was a reluctant seller in that he didn't have anything to buy yet, so we are leasing that 40 acres back to him for two years. But we'll, we, along with Five Valleys Land Trust, will have the control over management of the land, so there won't be overgraze. And if you noticed on one of the photos, maybe you go back to number four, I think it was. That one, that one right there. Move back one more. There. So that pink line is a fence line between the two properties. And it bisects that creek, I don't know how many times. It's a management nightmare for us, but it's also a management nightmare for wildlife and for the fishery. So our intent is, maybe not in the next year or two, but sooner than later, to remove that fence and remove that barrier for wildlife along that creek. We would go to the use of electric fence on either side to protect the riparian area during grazing periods. We have managed the existing riparian area that we own by only grazing it in the fall. And there'll be a grazing management plan with Five Valleys Land Trust that will protect that riparian area. I think everything else pretty well has been covered unless you have any questions.
Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close the hearing.
Well, I think this is a great project. It's great to see people work together to try to, like as Mr. Iverson just said, pull this ranch back together. As you can see by the lines on the map, there are the little white lines going down along skinny ones. There could potentially be a house on each one of those because it's already been divided. So hopefully we'll have some more opportunities like this to keep that land in ag production. So I am happy to make the motion that the Board of County Commissioners approve the expenditure of up to $140,000 in open space funds via the attached resolution towards the purchase of conservation easement totaling approximately 164 acres for the Iverson-Union Creek project, based on findings that the project qualifies for funding and the recommendations of the Open Land Citizen Advisory Committee, public hearing comments, and staff's analysis.
I would second that motion and speak to it just briefly. I echo your praise of the project. This is, I think, one of the coolest open space projects that I've seen in the mere two months that I've been here or whatever. But it's just really neat to see the Iversons try to put this ranch back together and talk about taking down the fence and letting the water run and protecting that waterway. And I just really appreciate this being in ag production especially. This is one of the things that we're trying to get at. Sometimes we do a better job in other ways and not in other ways. This seems to be a great way to do it, and I just really appreciate it and will gladly support it in spite of the fact that you all tried to give me pneumonia by dragging us out there in the rain and cold one day.
It was cold. So I echo what the Commissioners have said. This is a beautiful piece of property. I love, as you said, everybody who drives through Potomac. This is, you know, this is like the iconic view and open ag land. It's fantastic to have that in our county. And through all the ag land discussions we've been having, I mean, there's such a need for large agricultural parcels where we can have cattle grazing. I mean, it takes, it takes a large mass of land to do that, and it's fantastic that there are people willing to put in the work and the effort and the time and tears and money to be able to piece things back together and keep that going in our county. So thank you for all you've done. I think it's great. And thank you for Five Valleys. I think this is the first time that you've actually purchased land and done a deal like this in order to aid someone in getting a larger property into a conservation easement and into an egg production. So that's innovative and exciting, and that's great that you are all working with people to accomplish big things.
Thank you.
So the motion is, of course, to approve with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
My paper is all crinkly from the end that ran that day. [laughter] I had to soak my boots to get them cut off, but it was a great deal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next is, I will open the hearing regarding the designation of the common buckthorn, Rhamnos cathardica, as a noxious weed. I probably said that wrong, but, thank you. With the staff reports.
All right, good afternoon. For the record, my name is Bryce Christians. I'm the Weed District Coordinator for the Missoula County Weed District. And in January of this year, we put out a petition or a call for petitions for potential species for being listed on the county noxious weed list. And in that process, we received one, and that was for common buckthorn, Rhamnos cathardica, even if I pronounced it correctly, from the city of Missoula. And at that time, Missoula County Weed Board asked staff to conduct some further investigations on the extent of the infestation beyond what was contained in the petition, as well as do some literature review, which we carried out throughout the summer. And in October, at the Weed Board meeting, that information was presented. And in November, the Weed Board voted to recommend to the county commissioners that that species was listed as a county listed noxious weed. There's additional information on the actual species in the packet that was provided, as well as the original petition from the city of Missoula, who was the petitioner, and the results of our investigations throughout the summer, which did find extensive increases in the spread of that species outside of what the city had found along our riparian corridors and Butler and Grant Creeks. So our petitioner is here today, as well as the chair of our Weed Board. So I will let them give you any further information.
Hi, my name is Chris Carlson. I work for the City of Missoula's Conservation Lands Management Program, a division, part of Parks and Recreation. We manage about 4,000 acres of open space in and around Missoula, much of which has been purchased with open space bond money. Common buckthorn has been on our radar for about four years now. The largest infestation that we know of is up to the Rattlesnake Valley, and it in total covers about 2 acres. And in the heart of the infestation, it's really very quite dense, almost a hawthorn-thicket style denseness to it. And this weed has been documented as being problematic throughout the northern tier of states. It's listed as invasive in Wisconsin, Minnesota, Michigan, many of those tier states, and yeah, completely invades riparian areas and kind of dominates the ecosystem. And that's a particular concern to us in this area because our riparian areas contain about 50% of the diversity. And so things that generally impact and thrive in riparian areas pose a much greater threat to the biological integrity of these systems. And in Montana, if you look back through weed records, even going back to the '30s and '40s, there's documentation of people sending in for identification to Weed Board saying it's a weedy thing growing in their yard. So there's, it's been demonstrated to be fairly invasive, not just in Missoula County, but throughout the state. And listing it here at the county level is the first step if we were to consider listing it statewide, which is a potential in the next year. And having it listed at the county level will help free up resources for the city of Missoula to help treat this project, as well as the county Weed Board. And it requires two or three years easily of attention, because after you cut the big trees back, if you don't treat the stubs, they re-sprout, and even the roots can re-sprout new plants. And then there's also seedlings that get produced. And birds transport it, bears transport it, the seeds can float in water. And the more we look, the more places we find it. And I imagine as we start looking outside of Missoula County, we'll see it more and more. If you guys have any questions, we submitted this petition last year.
January.
January. And I believe this is the first weed that Missoula County would add to the species noxious weed list. It was introduced as an ornamental and hedgerow originally. To my knowledge, it's not heavily used as an ornamental species at this moment. It's not, it's not all that popular. And that's one of the main ramifications of listing it as a weed, that it would be prevented in the horticultural trade in Missoula County. But, yeah.
And so the benefits of listing are that people couldn't sell it, and also that does that make us eligible then for, there's funding streams opened up that are available for noxious weeds?
Yeah, absolutely. Montana has, the Montana Department of Agriculture has about $1.5 million each year that it spends on research and weed removal projects. And by being listed on the list of weeds, it makes it eligible for some of that support at the state level.
Thanks. Thanks.
Do you have further comment on the common buckthorn?
I have one. I went home yesterday after we talked and, did you get some? I have one. So I cut it off, and this is from the sucker. So now I know I need to treat the stump. But it is, from looking at the picture, I'm pretty sure it's, that's what it is. You know, it's kind of dried up this time of year.
We'll have Jay edit it a minute.
Yeah, so you can add me too, because I've got one weed in the backyard and one in the front now.
So I'm Jim Oliveras. I am chairman of your Weed Board. I'm also on the State Trust Fund Board. I'm also representative for the eight western counties and the State Weed Association. So I've got a little bit of background in weeds. Used to be part of my career when I used to work. Part of, I just wanted to make a comment to you that there's a challenge with invasive species. One of the best efficient and effective ways to handle some of these recurrent and new problems is to get ahead of the game, to get it when it's not very big, when it's not very large from an infestation or population standpoint. The other part is becoming aware that it is a potential problem. And so in that sense, we're pretty fortunate to have people like you for the city of Missoula that can key in on some of these species and reinforce some of the efforts of the counties. That being said, this may tend to also have people from throughout the state, other parts of the state, start looking at the species and seeing what the potential is, the potential impacts for the types of lands in particular. In this case, the riparian areas, especially since, you know, when I got to see the earlier proposal, the earlier discussions about those wetlands and those lands in the Potomac area. That's a classic of, you know, the natural native vegetation and ecosystems and the value of that and what we were partly trying to do as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the common buckthorn, listing as a noxious weed? All right, seeing none, I will close the hearing. Anticipate a motion?
I would move, do you have the RCA? Thank you. I would move that we approve designating the common buckthorn as a noxious weed in Missoula County.
And should we refer to the resolution also in the motion, since there is a resolution on this, I believe? Yes, go ahead.
It's in your packets, please.
Oh, yeah. So I would second the motion. And I would also recommend that we, once we've done this, that we work together to take this to the Montana Association of Counties for resolution at that level, which would then be supportive of any legislative intent.
All in favor of approving the resolution to designate the common buckthorn as a noxious weed in Missoula County?
Aye.
Passes, thank you.
I'll get this weed to Jeb. I'm sure it's the right weed.
And next up, I will open the hearing for a petition to rename a public road, Larrabee to Holleran. Probably said those wrong, too.
Probably said those wrong, too.
My name is Shira Scott. I'm with the Clerk and Recorder's Office. I am here to present a petition to rename Larabee Court, located in Larabee Edition Phase Two in Missoula County, to be changed to Holleran Court. The petition's been signed by a majority of the affected landowners. They have paid the petition fee full, and a notice of hearing has been published twice in an approved newspaper.
Can you just give me a little history? I haven't done a renaming of a road.
I haven't either. No, this is a whole new process. So I grew my procedures, at least I have a Public Works Manual, and it looks like just a majority of the landowners along that, along that right-of-way, need to approve the name change. Currently, there are, I'm going to look through my records here, and there were, I think there's eight lots, maybe one more? And six of those eight lots are owned by one individual, and the other two, one individual signed off on them, and the owner of one of the lots did not, but we had enough to move forward with the petition.
So Mr. Holleran owns six of the eight. Okay, gotcha.
So it must have been developed by the Larabee family, or else they liked that name, and so they're just changing the name in this one one.
All righty. Do we have any questions for Ms. Scott? Is there any public comment on the petition to rename Larabee Court to Holleran Lane? Seeing none, I will close the hearing.
I would move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request to rename Larabee Court to Holleran Lane, as it's met all the requirements of law.
Second? I just have one clarification question. Is it Holleran with an A or Holleron with an O? It's different in different documents here. Is it an O in the RCA?
O.
Okay, oh, that's how it's signed, too. Okay. So just a clarification. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. And then we have, I will open the petition to annex property into Frenchtown Rural Fire District.
So the Clerk and Recorder's Office has received a petition to annex a land described as, and bear with me, it's a lengthy legal description, the west half of the northeast quarter and the east half of the northwest quarter of Section 2, Township 15 North, Range 23 West, Montana, Moridian, Missoula County, Montana, and the east half, southeast quarter and the east half, northeast quarter of Section 2, Township 15 North, Range 23 West, Montana, Moridian. Accepting their form, when you hear a brand in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of said Section 2, more particularly described as follows: Beginning of the northwest corner of said northeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 2, hence running east along the north line of Section 8, a distance of eight rods to a point; hence running south, parallel to the north and south section line, a distance of 20 rods to a point; hence running west, parallel to the section line on the north, a distance of eight rods, more or less, to a point on the west boundary line of said northeast quarter, northeast quarter of said Section 2; hence running north along said boundary line, 20 rods, more or less, to the place of beginning, into the Frenchtown Rural Fire District. The petition's been signed by property owners who represent at least 40% of the acreage and 40% of the taxable value of the property to be annexed. The petition fee has been paid in full, and a notice of hearing has been published twice in an approved newspaper. And just a side note on that, a center section of the property in question was already annexed into the Frenchtown Fire District in the late '70s. Now we just do full parcels, but at that point in time, they would do just...
Jerry Mambur lines?
Yes, yes. So they already annexed a portion between Nine Mile Road and Cedar Creek Road.
Great, thank you.
What's a rod? It's about 20 feet, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know the exact...
Did you know they said measurements?
It's a formal survey measurement. It is, it's about 20 feet.
They use the carries on that long, you know, it's kind of like the ruler used to change by how long the king's foot was.
Yeah.
At one point in time, so yeah, rod.
You actually had chains, too.
And I can't remember how many rods and a chain and how many...
So the next one up from a rod is a chain?
Correct.
How long is a chain? 50 feet?
No.
Four score? So yeah, four score, 20 and so on.
Going back to your, I think 60 feet, actually.
So three rods.
Any other questions?
I have one for Shira. There's an obvious in this map that was provided, there's an obvious little white section in the center that must not be annexed in yet. Do we know if the fire department is contacting that person?
You know, I don't know, and I don't know who the owner of that parcel is, but I can look it up and inquire as to whether or not that's something there.
Just looks like we probably should make sure that they realize they aren't covered by the fire department, not that they wouldn't respond. They're not paying their shares, one of us.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment on the petition to annex property into the Frenchtown Rural Fire District? Seeing none, I will close the hearing.
I think that we can say we will move as documented rather than have to read all that stuff.
I would move that we approve an annexation of property in the Frenchtown Rural Fire District as described by the Clerk and Recorder's Office, otherwise known as 23205 Nine Mile Road, Hueson, Montana.
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And last, if I will reopen the hearing of the amendment to survey review responsibilities and checklists and survey review procedures. This was continued from November 18th of this year, and will be continued again for decision on January 13th of 2016, but we are open for any further comments that have been received or that the audience may have at this time. Has there been any further communication on it?
So we've been working with WGM and Territorial Land Works and have come up with a satisfactory resolution to submit on January 13th. We just want to make sure and provide proper notice prior to making it.
Right, it got left off of our agenda somehow, so that's why we can't finish it today.
Great, okay, perfect. Thank you. Then we will continue that hearing to January 13th, 2016.
We do have the ag coming that day, as well as the old dairy rezoning, so it will be a pretty full agenda, just to be aware.
Okay, and that comment that also at the January 13th meeting will be the hearing for the ag land mitigation policy and the subdivision regulations, as well as the...
Old dairy rezoning.
Old dairy rezoning. So that will be a full meeting, but this will be continued at that point as well. So, thank you. Is there any other business to be addressed at today's meeting? All right, seeing none, we are in recess. Thank you.